Okay, ready? Call to order, this Board of Education meeting for Pickwa City Schools for August 26, 2021, regular meeting. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Thompson, you?
Yeah, just real quick, for the viewers at home when they see this, because we're gonna have to tape it, a couple of different things. We had mic feedback last time we did a board meeting, so Eric was gonna try to find that during this meeting and let us know. So he may pop in if he can still detect that and let us know which mic is having problems. Second is, we gotta make sure we're talking louder so people can hear us and more direct. But we also are not gonna be able to do this live tonight because of the difficulty we're having, so we are gonna tape it and we'll play it, you know, at another time, just so for the viewers at home know that information, so.
All right, thank you. We did the Pledge of Allegiance, we had actually an earlier meeting, so we won't have to do that on this one. Mr. Hiddle, if you would do the roll call, please.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here. Okay, if we can, I'd like to get the, a motion for the approval of the July 20th regular board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, same sign if opposed. Okay, need a motion for the approval of the agenda for tonight, and before we do that, though, we had some additions, right?
We do. We waited last minute for the substitute teacher list because those are still coming in and we need to get as many people in there as we can, so there will be an addendum for the latest list of that.
Okay.
As well as the latest list of our bus routes. Beth worked on those today until like, gosh, we've got that probably 3:00. She wanted to get as many of those done as she could for board approval because we have to do that within 10 days of the school opening, so that list will be on there as well as the list of substitute teachers.
And both of those have been attached, so they are in the, they're in board.
Okay, so we have the motions?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, we have part B, no agenda items from the hearing. Special recognition, new staff, which?
So, so new staff was introduced, we did that a little bit early because we were having difficulty and we wanted to go ahead and get that process started, so Mr. Lyons did introduce them to you. Do you have any thoughts or comments you wanna share publicly on that? Nope?
Just so you know, we have, you've already approved and met some of them along, throughout the summer, too, and then we have a few more that will be here in September because they already had conflicts that they couldn't be at the meeting, so.
How many total altogether for?
Twenty-three new, that will be in, 22 new teaching positions, and we'll talk a little bit about how we ended up at that number later on in the meeting. I think we filled 10 or 12 early on, and then because of the things we were doing with the ESF funding, we increased some need there, but we met with 22 new teaching staff members the last three days, and then additional staff members are gonna be working on the attendance piece, which we'll talk about later, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Second is, I just wanted to bring attention to the board that the Treasurer's Office got the Government Finance Officers Association Award again this year. I don't know how many years in a row that, that has been. That group is not gonna toot their own horn, so I wanna make sure that, that we do because they work very hard, and I think you know that, and, and the whole district does, to make sure that our finances are, are on top line. The award is given for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financing. It recognizes districts and state local governments that go beyond the minimum requirements for their reporting. They have a comprehensive annual financial report that has transparency and full disclosure, and that it's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, so when they go through and look at all these records, they verify all that place, and again, it, it's been met probably, gosh, many years that we've gotten that in a row, so.
It was, I mean, they were, this has been going on since Vicky Kouchwal was here, so she received.
Yeah, it's, it's a good pride for the district, so it's, it's worthy of mentioning and making sure that everybody knows that, that we continue to get that, that award, so just wanted to make sure that you knew that.
Congratulations, Mr. Hiddle, to you and your staff, and.
Thank you.
That is awesome.
It's always, it's always good to get that.
Right. Next, we have the Treasurer's Agenda. What I'd like to do is get a motion, so when we go down to items one through seven, we can just vote. When we get through, and we can discuss any questions or anything as we go, so if I could have a motion to approve the Treasurer's Agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, Mr. Hiddle?
So, first thing on there is the monthly fiscal reports. Were there any questions about those? We are in the process of putting our budget together, you'll see that in September, I can say that the way that we're building it, there shouldn't be a reason, barring any unforeseen circumstances, to why we won't end another year in the black, so that's the good news. Second item on there is the recommended board approval. It's an annual thing that we do for our out-of-state tuition, it's $5,998,80, and we just approve that annually, it comes from the ODE, and we just, the board has to take action on it. Item number three is a fund-to-fund transfer, and that's money from the Allison Trust Fund to Food Service. Allison Trust Fund was set up to provide funds to our Food Service Department for those people who need free breakfast but don't get it, so this, it's a, it's sort of a catch basin. So this year, what we did was we helped to pay off some accounts that were in the rears for people who were struggling due to COVID, so that's what we did with the money, this go around because breakfasts and lunches are currently free from the federal government, so that's what we did with the money, this go around. Item number four is recommend, recommend approval of the annual commercial paper reporting requirement, so one of the things that I've done due to the fact that interest rates are non-existent, is we've come up with some more creative solutions, and one of those is to invest in commercial paper, it's allowed by the Higher Values Code, and I have an investment firm that I work with that, that scouts that stuff out for us, and so one of the requirements is that I bring to you a list of the things that we currently own commercial paper in, so that's what this is. The next item on there, number five, is to increase substitute pay to $120 a day. I will say that only makes it $15 an hour, so it's not like we're paying a fortune to do that, but we wanna try to be able to be competitive when you can go make Subway sandwiches at 19 and $20 an hour these days. I know Potbelly's was hiring at like $20 an hour down at the Green, so we do appreciate our subs that come to work for us. Number six is to recommend the attached salary schedule for two different ones, one is for transportation, and that is adding the position of other duties as assigned, and that is specifically for our bus drivers who are requesting to work 30 hours a week, and so we were doing that to be able to, for some retention purposes as well as attraction for other candidates to be able to drive bus, because it's a big deal right now, is to try to find bus drivers. So, we've been successful at that, I think, I think we brought in over seven.
Yep.
People, so it's worked to this point, and then we also have our attendance support salary schedule, and that person is going to help us with truancy and attendance issues in the district, and so that is a new position, but something that we desperately need, trying to get people back on track with getting to school. It was a big push that we had before COVID, and then that happened, and so now we're trying to get back on track again, and this person's gonna be instrumental in doing that, so those are the two salary schedules that are there tonight. That's all I have.
Okay, and Mr. Hiddle, you wanna do roll call on?
You've already approved my agenda.
Okay, so we can just do a?
It's already done.
Good. Excellent. Okay, well, then we've got Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. More information for the public than anything, 'cause I think you, you've seen in my updates, but school starts on the September 7th. Again, we do have the calendar that goes Labor Day to Memorial Day, this is our third year doing that, it seems to go really well, and I continue to get good feedback from that, so the 7th is our first day, all of our information that parents would wanna see is currently on our website. A lot of the schools are communicating that out, there are instant messenger as well as there's, and the postings and windows by the front entrances as they get it, so a lot of information there, they can call the schools during the office hours as well as the board office, and we'll assist as we can. If there's any kindergarten students out there still, we wanna make sure that we're getting those registrations. Sometimes when the buses start rolling, a parent kinda says, "Oh yeah, I gotta get my kid in there," but just another reminder to, to get that started so that we can get those numbers in. One reminder to parents, we have to remind each year that if they want their fees waived, they do have to fill out the free and reduced forms for lunch. It seems weird to do that this year because we, we applied for the USDA grant, there is no cost for anybody for lunches or breakfast, but they still have to fill that form out in order to, to qualify for that fee waiver, so, and that has to be done every year, sometimes a parent might think, "If I do that one time, we'll let cover them the rest of the school year," so we try to really make sure we get that message out, so I've communicated that, principals are trying to communicate that out and get, get parents to remember that if they wanna apply for that waiver, they have to do that through the free and reduced lunches.
That's not everybody, though.
No.
Not everyone has to make a waiver.
Correct. If they want to do the waiver, and they would, they have to qualify for, in terms of their income, but if they wanna do that, they do have to fill it out yearly, and they have to fill out that form to get their fees waived, so.
If they have multiple students, so they have to do one, one application?
Correct.
For all?
For all, yeah, yep, just like they would if they were filling out for their free and reduced lunch, yeah, so.
I will just mention that it is vitally important that we continue to fill out the free and reduced lunch forms even while we are on free breakfast and lunch. Our district gets a significant amount of money through, it's what's economically disadvantaged students, but our free and reduced lunch number actually counts for a lot of the money that we receive, so it is still important that we complete that paperwork, even though we are providing free breakfast and lunch, the paperwork is important, so I don't want the public to be like, "Oh, well, it's no big deal anymore," it actually is a very big deal in the long run, so we still need to have that paperwork filled out.
Good point. One last note, our food director, Jennifer Garland, got notice that there, there are food shortages in certain items, I don't know if you've been to the grocery store lately and seen some empty shelves, I know I have, they're experiencing it in restaurants, they're experiencing it in schools. One of the things we've done to try to remedy that is we got some extra freezer space storage at the high school, we're gonna try to get the commodities in that we can and get them in the freezer, so we have enough food first off. We'll try to come up with a system if the menus change to make sure we can communicate that out. We know kids and parents rely on that because, you know, a kid wanna come for pizza, but maybe not fish sticks, so we wanna make sure we, we communicate that if we have to change it, and it could be to the point where, you know, Spring Creek has one lunch, Washington has another, depending on the food availability, we just don't know until we get into the year and get that going. Our first priority, like I said, is to make sure we have enough food, and then after that, we'll try to make sure we get the food everybody wants to eat and, and get it communicated so that they know what it is, so we've got that on our radar and we're trying to address that upfront, so, any questions on that? Nope? Just an update on the renovation work that we're doing, we've tried to send pictures, I hope you've been able to see those, and anytime you wanna come out and see that, you're welcome to do that, but we are on phase three now of the high school renovations, we're on the second floor, it's pretty much, pretty much done, there's a little bit of touch-up work and, and some, some checklist that we have to, to still do, teachers are starting to move things in, it's really looking nice, it, it flows, it's got the pickle colors to it, just like our elementaries, so you're gonna see that theme all throughout the whole building. Carpet removed, we got the flooring in, painting, better lighting, the science labs are amazing now, the space actually fits the number of students that are in there, updated equipment, that was the pride when that school opened over 40 years ago, was the science labs were current, 40 years later, they're not, so having those current again and up to date has been a, a really fun piece to see come together, so, so that, that's doing well. Next year, the final phase will be the, the academic wing on the first floor, the whole library center is kind of converting into a new, newer area, more for our college-level students, you know, we did the 500 wing for the workforce area, so we're trying to put a focus in, into that, that area there, so, coming together nicely. Phase one of two at the junior high has started, so some of the flooring has been replaced and half of it, some of the painting, again, has been done to match up the rest of the buildings with the red and blue, we're getting some of those 70s greens, yellows, and oranges, and browns out of there, can't figure out why they were still there, but now it's more pickle colors, and it's looking really nice, so. Alexander Stadium needed repainted, we did that, there were some cracks in the mortar, did some tuck pointing, tried to make sure the moisture was, was taken out of those, those areas. We had a lot of landscaping that was growing into the fence, you know, I went back and found an old photo of when they first put it in, and you've got little pine trees that were now, you know, huge, so we had to remove those so they didn't damage the fence, right now, we just kinda have a mulch area, but we have a design for that, and we'll get that put in as soon as we can get that, that taken care of as well, so, good things happening, a lot of good progress, and we'll, we'll continue to do that, you know, maintaining the buildings is very important to, I think, the community as well as us, so we'll, we'll continue to do that.
So zero concern that none of it will be unfinished before school starts?
No, we'll be able to move in and get things done, there might be a few things that we need to touch up and, and readdress or come back to, but nothing that's gonna stop us from starting.
IP is getting in soon, don't they?
Yeah.
They're already in, the majority of the furniture and everything is already in, we've, actually, three or four of the units have already been pulled off-site, and we maybe have one and a half or so left to unload, so we're almost finished, and everything will be put back up in the high school, so we're.
Yeah.
We're approaching the end, there's just some things where this weekend, they've gotta come in and put some grit types into the floor so that it's not slippery, on the first floor, we've taken the tile out, the old quarry tile's gone, and we've put gray coating in, so they're trying to do that so that kids don't fall on wet rainy times and snow and that kinda stuff, so we're, that needs to be finished, and then they'll finish putting the border up, and the first floor will be complete, upstairs, it's mainly paint that they're finishing up on, vinyl coats of paint.
There'll be some paint touch-up and things like that, but nothing that'll stop us from opening and starting.
Lockers will be here after Labor Day, but nothing that will stop us from going.
You say you cut the pine trees down or cut them back?
We took them out, yeah, they were so, they were grown into each other so much that, that, that area is elevated, if you can remember, there's kinda like a wall around it, it was growing into that, it had grown into the fences, we, we looked at what the options were, we had, we had some people come out and take a look at it, and the ultimate decision was to redesign it. Even in talking to people that put it in back then, they kinda said, "Yeah, we know these trees were gonna get, get big at some point and not, not fit that area," so our intent is not to do that, to, to put those in. Additionally, if you can remember coming into the main entrance, there, there were some steel or metal plates that, that were like, all the donors and everything, so the sun would come in and hit those, and they would expand and warp, some of them did that so many times, they fell, they pulled out of the wall, they cracked the wall and the mortar, and they, they bent and warped, so rather than somebody get hurt, because they are very heavy, we removed those, fixed all that wall, and then we're gonna re-put signs over in that mulch area and, and put them in, in there so that they're not a danger to people that, that are in that area, so it, it'll get all redone and, and, and put into place, it's just a matter of getting that time and getting the people in there to do it, so. Any other questions on that?
Okay, Superintendent's Agenda?
Nope.
Oh, you're not ready, okay, sorry.
Nope, we got more.
Okay.
Before I forget, though, while we're on to football, our football game tomorrow night with West Carrollton has been canceled, it's because West Carrollton has a number of people that are quarantined and they're unable to play. However, Chip went into speedy mode and began working, and we are now able to play Westerville. Westerville has agreed to come to Pickwa to play, so we get an extra home game for the fans. They're still working out some details as we speak, so after the board meeting, I hope we can get those final details, and then we'll start communicating everything out. It'll be here in Pickwa, same kickoff time, tickets are gonna be sold online, that's the fastest way that we can get them out, as well as Westerville, they use the same ticketing system that we do. Reserved seating and parking won't count for this game because it's an extra game, and we don't have a way to put that in, so it's all general admission, first come, first served, we have unlimited seating, we'll be fine with that, but the, the reserved parking that's normally in place would be whoever first gets there and, and parks, so, an additional home game against a team we've never played, we'll not sync film, we'll have to see how all that goes, but we're excited to at least have the opportunity to get our kids on the field, so we'll get that out as soon as we're done here and we get all the final details.
And that's tomorrow night, right?
Tomorrow night, yep.
Just out of curiosity, where's that fallen in into playoff rank and all that sort of stuff?
I don't know about those points, West Carrollton, being that they had to withdraw, we get the win, but we don't get the points, so I'm not sure, Tony, would you know about?
So, it's the same, so you're playing a Division II team like us, just in a different region, the win would give us their first level points, again, if they're good and they continue to win, we'll continue to get points from them, just like we would from any other team, so it's, it's nice, otherwise, you don't replace that game, you don't get points, and that causes some, some trouble, so, everybody's feeling good about it, so.
Good. We're communicating with the band, cheerleaders, and everybody right now, 'cause families are gonna have to make those adjustments, so hopefully, like I said, when we get done, we'll, we'll get that out, so. We do have a presentation for you to kinda talk about some of the work and such, is he able to bring that up? There it is.
There it is?
Yes, he is.
All right. So, you, you probably remember last March, March of 20, we kinda started talking about redoing our goals and getting things ramped, and then everything kinda shut down on us, so if we can get to the next slide, Eric, if you can hear us? Do we do the?
We have to.
Check, oh, there you go, right there. So, the governor closed us down in, in March of 2020, and we've talked before how we had to revamp everything literally kind of overnight, and it was, it seemed like an impossible feat, but everybody kinda threw everything together. I don't wanna read everything to you, I, you, you can kinda see up there the, the consequences of that, a lot of it was unintended, of course, and it just happened, but, you know, you look at things like, we had a lot of kids that just didn't have technology, they didn't have internet, we had to do some paper packets, we sent those out, but we got less than 10% back, and, you know, we had a 24-hour, you know, hotline, and we had people calling us at all times, it was just, a lot of things happened very quickly, we got devices out, but you can see we didn't get a lot of them back, so a lot of consequences happened because of that, that shutdown, that affected our kids, our staff, our parents, and, and those, there's some lingering effects to that. Next one? Thank you. The in-person challenges that we face, you see on the far right, we're very pleased that we were able to stay open, we didn't close once because of COVID last year because of how we, we, we did things, but it still doesn't mean everything was, was great for kids. There were personal and family illnesses, students and staff that we had to deal with that kept people out for, for long times, we had required quarantines we had to put in place because of CDC, you can see we had social distancing, masking, community shut down, all kinds of resources, from parks to the Y, to the library, to you name it, I mean, everything just wasn't available to kids as it was, and we were limited in terms of how we can get the community engaged with us, and that really had an impact on, on everything, from, again, our community to our, our parents and our students, so not, not things we were, you know, excited about. Our remote learning challenges was the fact that we still had some families that just didn't have good support systems, and sometimes that meant parents had to work, maybe a grandparent was stepping in or a babysitter, and that's just a little bit different than what the kid normally is set up, not to their fault, not a criticism of anybody, it's just, that's just what happened, some people lacked materials at home, the resources they needed to do some really good things, we still had a lot of poor internet connections for some, and, and you've got the, you know, if, if they don't have that ability to have that good support, sometimes you're completing a task versus mastering the content, there's, there's a difference between those two pieces, and then you can see there what percentage of people we lacked completion of the courses, so there are gaps in the curriculum that have evolved as a part of that, which is gonna be talked about later when we talk about some of the, the curriculum mapping that we did to help overcome some of these issues.
Do you know how many of that percentage ended up enrolling in summer school?
We don't have that correlation yet, but we directly called each one of those people specifically and said, "We really recommend you to come to summer school." I, I, I know a lot did take us up on that, and, and we'll, we'll have to do a direct correlation to see how many of those did, some didn't, but, but many did, did take us up on that.
This slide just continues talking about the challenges, you can see, I chart on the left side's for first semester, and then the one on second side is second semester. On-track, that percentage of kids would be those kids that are meeting, meeting those minimum standards for accessing the online school versus those who are incomplete, they're not even accessing enough to be considered on-track at that point, and then you can see in the second semester, the, the amount of students that are withdrawing at that point, as well as the on-track and completes. And then, we talk about test scores all the time, but you can see how or where the, is there really significance in this year's scores? You look at the decline across the state, 16% lower, same as we are, and then the average in the counties, 13% decrease. Remote students had the opportunity to opt out, so they may not even be in, and we had to chase tons of kids to get tested, and then those conditions aren't good for testing for kids, and then obviously trying to get people in for makeup, so the reality is, is that data or those scores really truly a good picture of Pickwa City Schools and what's happening here? This was really important, and Mindy shared this one with us the other day, you can see on the very right side, we're looking at 243 kindergarteners currently registered, we have 27 sitting there in the system that haven't finished registration, so a very significant number of kindergartners coming in, which is also why we're trying to recreate the balance between the two buildings, because, you know, a lot of those kids are over at Washington, as are our first graders, so we're trying to talk with parents and see if they're interested in moving over to Spring Creek to balance those numbers out, to make those classrooms more equitable for our kids, too, so, that's gonna be 270 kids if they all, if they all come in, plus the ones that say on the first day of school, "Hey, we're here to, to register for kindergarten," so that's gonna be another, another challenge, but a good problem to have as those numbers come up, too.
So, on this slide, we see some information about kindergarten screening, not only do we have more kindergartners coming, of the kindergartners that we do have coming, thank you for taking care of my microphone, Mr. Hiddle, of the increased number of kindergartners that we do have coming, those kindergartners we have screened so far, we have found that there is a, apparently we're having microphone. Okay, so, we have a microphone there, of the increased number of kindergartners that we have coming, of those that we have completed kindergarten screening with, we are seeing a very significant number of those kids coming in, what, in our assessments, we could categorize emerging or high-risk in terms of the skills that they should have coming in, so you can see, pre-candidacy, we were at about 56% of the kids coming in, high-risk category, and as of this year, we're at 70% of those kids are moving out of the high-risk category, that's pretty significant. Not only does it mean that we have a lot of extra work to do to get those kids up to where they need to be, so our, our primary teachers have, have their work put out there, and I know they're gonna need to focus on this, and I'm sure they're up for the challenge, but that, that will be a significant hand, issue that we have to deal with for the next couple of years, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to.
Close all those gaps within, you know, a couple months' time, it's, it's going to take time, and part of the reason for that could be because preschools weren't able to operate fully last year either, many of our Head Start, our other preschool and daycare facilities were all cut to half capacity due to all the requirements, so you had fewer students even able to take advantage of, of preschool, so this is gonna impact us in the future. One of the other things that we've been working on, and just kinda falls in with the kindergarten, as you know, in the district, we've been working on our success-bound plans, we started at the high school and went in descending order, each building was to identify and develop a plan for what a successful student looks like at the, at each grade level, so we have those targets to make sure that those kids are hitting those targets, so they're successful and ready to move to the next grade level. Last year, we were able to work on the preschool profile, so we're talking about what does it look like to be ready to come to kindergarten, we just said we have 70% of kids identified as not being ready, but what does that mean, and what does that look like to be ready? So we have created some documents and some resources that, that answer that question for parents, we get that call a lot, so what, what does my child need to know to, to come to kindergarten, what do we have to be able to do? So we've developed some, the kindergarten, the preschool profile, it can be found on our district website, and it's the preschool or kindergarten success bound, in, in addition to just, we didn't wanna just create lists of things, we wanted to make it something that parents could relate to in home, so we created a list of, of common activities and. So we created a list of common activities and things that you could do at home to incorporate the skills that kids need to have when they come to school. So that list is there based in different categories. And then we created a series of videos that included children who were preschoolers at the time. And we demonstrated and modeled what that looked like. So on the website, then, along with all those skills, there are little video clips that model for parents what that looks like. So that was something that we were excited to be able to accomplish last year. And I think your turn.
Money. So we did receive some money to help out in this process. Initially, the concerns were what's going to happen to income tax revenue, as well as what's going to happen to property taxes? And if we're going to be able to collect on those. And we found that property taxes remained pretty steady, but the income tax revenue did dip. So the government has helped in this regard. We had SER-1 money, that was almost $780,000. SER-2 money was almost $3 million, and then ARP-SER was about $6.5 million. So this money has been coming in, and we have basically spent the SER-1 money this year dealing with, that was the whole dealing with COVID, cleaning all the processes we put into place to do that, as well as some staff for that. So that money is pretty much gone, and so we've been using SER-2 and 3 money coming forward. And so we've got plans for that. Those are available on our website, and so people can come and check out what the plan is. But that's where we got into, how do we get our kids caught up? So the next slide, we'll talk about where are we focusing this money on? And it's really on student wellness, student success, and student-centered technology. And so the wellness part of that, you're talking about nurses, counselors, psychologists. We went through and figured out who are going to have the direct impact on our students and making sure that we're providing them the health, basically their health and safety that they need. And then you've got district student success team, which is the big, big concept that we're trying to focus on. One of the requirements for ARP-SER-3 money was that we spend at least a minimum of that $6.5 million, 20% of that on catching students up, but we don't want to just do the bare minimum. So most of our focus is on classroom instruction, the student success team. And this is where we end up bringing on coaches at grade levels across the district, as well as Kiara, to head that up. So that is our big chunk of what our plan is going towards. And then being able to have the technology on hand for all of our students. You know, obviously, if we ever needed to go back to that, we need to have that technology available. But we also, we had technology that was getting ready to phase itself out as well. So this is helping us be able to afford to do that. And then we're also expanding our STEM and other learning programs in the district. As you can see, in the primary levels, we're extending STEM down all the way to that, the primary buildings. And those are the activities that's going on with our SER money.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's the purpose of the coaches? Are we going to learn more about it coming up?
Yes.
Part of, as Mr. Hiddle said, we use a great deal of our money to focus on catching students up and giving them learning opportunities. And we spent a significant amount of that money with our summer programs. We've had a very, very busy summer with summer learning programs. We offered more summer programs. I've been in the district, this is my 30th year. So this tops any summer that I've ever seen in terms of the number of programs that we offered for all students. We left it open to all students, not just those that we considered to be at risk or needing extra help. These were available and offered to any parent and student to take advantage of. We had summer school at all grade levels. We had a record number of students attend that. We had a record number of opportunities for our high school students in particular. I'll get to that in the next slide. But in addition to that, we still maintained all the other programs that we've done during the summertime. Our summer reading program, our bookmobile, our connections with the public library and their summer reading program. Careful Corners, all those other things that we did in previous years, we continue to do this year on top of all the summer programs that we did. Okay, there we go. Thank you. As I was just mentioning, we had record numbers of students participate those. And when you look at this slide and you see the numbers, hundreds and hundreds of students who participated in summer programs. And we offered, in most cases at the elementary, two different sessions, kind of before and after the Fourth of July week. So when you see some of this information, you'll see it referred to as session one and session two. Students attended, could attend all of the sessions, but we did kind of divide it up into two parts. We had over 58 staff members teaching this summer, which I think is an incredible number of people who, after an already exhausting year, were still willing to keep going and keep going and do what they could for the students in our district, which is great. At the secondary level, definitely a focus on trying to make sure that students had the courses and credits that they needed in order to stay on track and be ready to graduate on time with their cohort, that they weren't credit deficient after some of their remote learning experiences or just because of all the impact of the pandemic. Attendance at summer school is always something that we have to monitor carefully. It is challenging to keep really, really high attendance numbers during summer school. Many times it starts out really well, and then will kind of dwindle as the summer goes along. I think, you know, for many, many reasons. But you can see the numbers in this chart. We did see the typical drop from the first session to the second session. Sometimes that's because of vacations or other things that families are participating in. But I think of key interest here is the number of students who had perfect attendance. So during summer school, despite how challenging it is to get students to continue to attend all summer long, the graph on the right shows you the percentage of students who had perfect attendance during the school year, so during summer school. So that's fantastic. We actually had 15 students who managed to have perfect attendance for both summer school sessions. So great numbers. I know Mr. Thompson has written letters to those students to congratulate them. And we will also be having some, at the elementary level, we'll be having a skating party later in September to reward them for their great attendance. So we appreciate parents' efforts to get their students here. As far as our summer school outcomes go, I think you can see the numbers there in terms of hours of instruction that our students received. And the significance of this is that everything was designed to be small group instruction. So it was very intensive instruction, very targeted to meet student needs. So in most cases, we tried to have five, six, seven kids in a group or less, so that we could really intensify and hone in on what they need. So 60 hours of instruction for our students at the primary level, 54 hours of instruction at the intermediate grade level. And at Junior High and High School, it looked a little different. And when we looked at the Odyssey Ware and the credit recovery efforts at the high school, 147 and a half credit courses were completed this summer for kiddos. 147 credits that kids earned this summer to keep them on track. That's a fantastic number. Not to mention that we've already had 60 home visits this summer with families to encourage them to keep with it and not give up. And we'll talk more about the person who did all those home visits here in a few slides. But you can just see the effort and the outreach that everybody has put into trying to get students and families back feeling comfortable and helping everybody to move forward and be as successful as they could. Another major project that we've been working on last school year and into the summer was curriculum mapping at the Junior High and High School level. As you can see, curriculum mapping means taking all of the resources, the state standards that we teach, and very carefully analyzing and planning for the instruction that happens. So we're looking at the standards that we teach, how we teach them, when we teach them, what is the best way and resources to teach them. And so Mr. Bloom has worked all summer long with the Junior High and High School teams to complete this work. And so this is a huge undertaking. On top of all the other summer projects that we were doing, we worked with the staff to do this. So focusing in on the curriculum, the state standards, the model curriculum that this state provides us, and making sure that we have a clear map for the future. Because we also know it isn't just our students who did remote learning that were impacted by COVID. All students were impacted by COVID. All families were impacted by the pandemic, and everybody was impacted in different ways. So we have to make sure that we have all these things in place, that we can continue to meet all those needs and move forward. At the primary level, or at the elementary level, at Pickle Central Intermediate School, oops, I'm sorry, one additional slide. Go ahead, Mindy. On this slide, you can see an example of what those curriculum maps look like. And what Mr. Bloom wanted me to point out was that one of their key focus when they were doing their curriculum mapping was the focus on literacy skills in all content areas. It's not just a reading teacher's responsibility to teach reading. All teachers work with children on improving their reading skills. And so at the Junior High and High School level, when they were working on their curriculum maps, they really focused on how do we continue to improve and focus on those literacy skills in all of our content areas? So they spent a lot of time talking about strategies and resources to do that at the Junior High and High School level. So that's an important part of the curriculum work they did this summer. At the intermediate level, we continued our work on finishing up our long process of moving towards standards-based grading at the intermediate. We've been slowly introducing this from kindergarten all the way up. This year, we will fully implement at Pickle Central Intermediate School, standards-based assessments and reporting. So we have spent many, many hours last year and during the summer with our PCIS teams to have this work ready to go. So parents at Pickle Central will now see revised report cards. Some of them will look a little bit different, more so than others, but they will be standards-based. The grading scale, the traditional grading scale of A, B, C, D letters, grades, will no longer be there. It'll be a numeric scale, 1, 2, 3, 4. And for every standard that is taught, there is now a rubric that the teachers have developed. So on the right-hand side, you see that rubric. All students and parents will have access to the rubrics. The importance of that is that it clearly outlines what students need to be able to know and do for each standard. It clearly outlines it for parents, so that they can see, here's where I am, here's the things that I still need to do to be able to say that I'm right where I need to be with each standard in the grade level. On our website, you will now find, under the student and parent tool page, links to all of this. So it'll say like 4th grade ELA, that's the 4th grade, what the report card looks like. And when you go in, there's actually a live link on there, and it takes you directly to the rubric. So parents can drill down as much as they want to drill down and see exactly everything their students are working on. So this was a huge project as well, and we're ready to roll with it this year. So that will help us, not only was it important work that we were already doing, but as we think about the impact of the pandemic, this will help us be able to really narrow in which skills do students already have? Where do we need to do some gap filling, and where are kids already ready to move on? And.
Too fast.
There we go.
Do you have any questions so far? A lot of stuff coming at you really fast. All right, just a quick note on professional development that we were able to put out there. As you know, there were barriers to some of the professional development we can do over the last year and a half. It was hard getting people there for various reasons, because of quarantining illnesses and just sometimes they were done online. So we offered a variety. Our curriculum department and cabinet members put together some PD opportunities for staff to come in. And again, they stepped up to the plate. I mean, many of them came in and did this despite all the extra work and things they put into place last year. They came out and spent their time making sure that they still stayed abreast of all the different things that we were putting into place. So kudos to our cabinet members that put this together for our staff, so they could have those opportunities. But also a special thank you to all the teachers and staff members that came in to continue their professional development, so that they can implement these things in our classrooms for our students' benefit.
So student success team, you asked, we talked a little bit about this in the past, and just a little bit of backstory, trying to figure out how to utilize, best utilize our SER funds. We got with our building principals and talked through that, and ultimately decided we wanted to invest in our teachers in a way to be able to provide support for them. We're fortunate enough to be able, through another interview process, be able to hire someone in Kiara Williams. This is Kiara Williams, who has a background in instructional coaching, as well as curriculum and development of curriculum, to lead that team. She's going to be the director of the student success team, and she's already begun that work. So she'll be able to share more about what that work's going to look like and how we're going to invest in our teachers.
Good evening to each of you. I'm so excited to be here. A little taller, but not much. So excited to be here and really excited to get started with this work. I had the opportunity to meet all of the coaches that we hired for this position this week. We were in a two-day retreat, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But as you can see, we've got a nice spread across the district, 10 coaches across the district that'll be serving primarily in mathematics and literacy, supporting some of our district initiatives that we've spoken about, making sure that teachers have what they need to implement some of the things that Teresa was talking about in terms of the curriculum mapping, making sure that we're building capacity with instructional practices, making sure that we're having an impact on student achievement. As you can see, like I said, in the lower grades, it's mostly focused on literacy, mathematics, and fidelity of implementation with our curriculum resources. And then up at the other, upper grades, some of that integration of literacy and writing across the grade levels, of course, math and literacy. And then again, fidelity of instruction across the district, I'm sorry, across our programs. Even though when we were hiring, I do want to note that we wanted to make sure there was equity of expertise, specifically in reading and math. The coaches that we've hired, their skills span far across all aspects of instruction. So I'm really excited for them to be able to have this opportunity to work with our teachers to build their capacity. Let me go to the next one. This slide is showing some of the areas that they'll be supporting teachers in. And each one of these categories, there's a lot more different ways and approaches. And we spent some time brainstorming some of those things. But these are just, if you would put them into major categories, these are some of the ways that they would be supporting teachers. The goal here is to kind of meet teachers wherever they are. Wherever they are in the gamut of skills and practices that we want them to be able to do effectively. We want the coaches to be able to use different strategies and approaches to meet the teachers wherever they are. And so here's a few pictures of some of the collaboration that happened. Like I mentioned before, we spent two days in a retreat this past Monday and Tuesday. And that was well-spent, allowing them to get acquainted with each other, get acquainted with their new teams within their buildings. The posters just show some of the collaboration that took place, where we were kind of brainstorming, what are all the different ways that we could support teachers? And then this right here is just an example of how excited they are. This was not something that I thought to have them do, but they were just so excited to get in and roll up their sleeves. This is just one example for one building of, I guess, a menu or an entry letter, if you will, that they're going to give to their teachers to explain what their mission is and their purpose, and some of the things or some of the strategies or the services that they can provide staff. And we just thought something like this would allow staff to approach this in a positive and more inviting way. So you'll see something like this for every building. But the middle, the junior high, they were the first up to get this done, so. And that's all I have. Again, we're all really excited. There's a lot of synergy that's building up. And another thing that took place, I forgot to mention, is that we were able to spend some time with the principals, where some planning took place. the principals, where some planning took place. So each building, team of coaches with their principals sat down together and started hashing out some of those improvement goals that they want to utilize the coaches to support with. That's it. Thank you.
So if I could just reiterate, when the ESAR funds came out, a lot of districts spent them on things like HVAC systems. We didn't have to do that, because our systems were already up to date, and they were, they were meeting all the requirements we had. I bet you we get 50 emails a day from vendors wanting to sell programs. And programs come and go, and don't last. So when we met with the principals and staff, they were saying, let's invest in our teachers, and let's, let's, let's put together processes and things in place that are having the longevity that we're hoping that they'll have. When we made all the quick adjustments going into, you know, the shutdowns and everything, some, some gaps and things happened in the curriculum, and we had to bring everybody back to focus. And we had to get that, that, you know, cohesiveness, in terms of what was happening across the district, too. So getting everybody back on target with all the curriculum that we're using, and refocused, is going to be really important for us to do. So there's that continuum for students to have as they move through our district.
So these are short-term positions?
Good question, yes. They'll only be available through the ESAR funds. Once those are done, those teachers will go back into the classroom. Yep. We're funding it through the ESAR program.
So there'll be space to take them all back in, and...
Yeah. So what happens is, we pull the teachers, every coach is, they're already our teachers. We knew we had fantastic people, and that came through in the interview process, for sure. But, so when we replace those, we know, and we tell those folks upfront, this is three years for ESAR funding. The idea is that all the tools that we had received through the coaching program are now embedded in each one of our schools after that three-year process. It would be wonderful to be able to have that, but that's a luxury right now. But we know that we're investing in something that's going to be good for everybody. So at the end of that, our teachers who are coaches will go back into their teaching instructional spots. And our people who replace them, ultimately, unless they've been able to secure a job with us somewhere else, will be, end up looking for a position. And we should also share with them, if we have openings, they're considered internal people. Try to help them out.
Okay.
All right. So we'll talk about attendance, then. We know that attendance is important to be in school, not only because you're going to get your academic skills that you need, but you're also going to develop those lifelong skills that you're going to take with you after you graduate from high school, whether you go into college, and then eventually on to the workforce. So we are going to, this year, we have an, an attendance support coordinator. And what she's going to do is, her main goal is to really get out early and focus on some intervention pieces with, with our parents and with our students, before school even starts. So she's been working with our building administration, looking at those families that have struggled in the past couple of years, getting kids to school, reaching out to those families, really determining to see what's up. Why aren't they coming to school? What can we do to, to get them here? Working with them, just on some strategies and some interventions that, that they can use to, to get kids to come to school. And then, as the school year progresses, she's really going to, again, go back out, work with administration and families, to offer that support when we have excessive absences and habitual truancy, or habitual absences, as it's now called. When you look at our chronic absences over the past four years here, remember, chronic absence means that they've missed 10% or more of the school year. That's about two absences a month, which is about 18 days, school days. We haven't been to where we wanted to be, since we started tracking this back in 17, 18. The asterisks underneath the 19, 20 school year, well, we, we had to shut down in March. So really, it was, that's 18.92% was as of March 13th, because attendance was more difficult to track when we were doing everything to get into remote learning. And then this past school year, we have almost doubled our chronic absence rates. And that is a, that can be from the whole gamut that we took with remote learning, to even when you have kids that have to go through isolation or quarantine, all plays into part with that. The good news is, is when you look at attendance rates, and those that have struggled the last few years, Krista's already reached out to 80 families already. And she's only been, she started a week and a half ago. So she's already been knocking on doors, leaving messages, communicating with, with families on, on the importance of attendance.
You might remember, we did work with, we had an attendance officer helping us through the county. Does a great job, absolutely no criticism of her at all. But when you're working through the whole county, you get not as fast a service sometimes. And again, it's not, it's not to her fault. So we just really felt like we needed somebody to, to work directly with us that could really help us. When you look at these statistics up here, in terms of transition rates, and how kids move in and out of our district, and where they're located, and our homelessness, and who's living in hotels, and you think about all those impacts that it's having on students and their abilities to make friends, to develop a cohesive learning process. You heard us talk about, like, the new reporting system, grade cards, and the mapping that we're doing to look for gaps. When kids move between schools and districts and cities, you know, they might get, you know, they might get, you know, addition in Pickwa, and if they move to Troy, Troy might be doing addition at that time. So they're getting addition twice, but now they're missing subtraction, because the sequence is different between districts. So students that move a lot, really lose a lot of learning and the ability to master content and apply it, not to mention the whole social-emotional pieces, where you're developing friends, you feel like you're included, you're a part of a community, those kinds of things. So when we talk about a support coordinator, we're not talking about a person that's going to go out and, you know, blast families and take them to court and those kinds of things. But how do we support families that are dealing with these kinds of situations? You can look at our numbers, and then note that in 19 and 20, when things shut down, we weren't even able to collect the information, because kids kind of just came up missing. So nobody was in school for us to get those transitional pieces. So there are some gaps in that year, but our numbers are pretty high last year, in terms of what's happening with our students. So that's a real concern. It has been for some time. How do we, how do we help those students and those families? It's a pretty big deal.
Out of the 80 families that she's, she's went to visit, what kind of response is she getting?
So she has, some, she hasn't had a response. So she's still going back to try and contact them. She's talked with some students, you know, and working with them on what they can do to get back into school. Some of the students that she's talked to, she's already had previous relationships with. So she's already worked with those families, and has gone through that. There have been a couple of parents, after they've met, they've actually contacted the school and said, okay, what's my kid's schedule look like? You know, who's their teacher going to be? And just trying to talk with them, and trying to get those things established already.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
You, you might remember last year, the parents sending the note to us, saying, whatever, whatever Shelley Mitchell did, you, you have to support her, because she got my kid to graduate. You know, here was a parent that was vulnerable, and saying, I just couldn't get my 18-year-old kid to school anymore. And she was thanking the fact that Shelley made that connection with the kid, and went to the house, and made those direct links. And that's what we're hoping to accomplish. You know, we're hoping that the parents can really say, thank you. Because there are a number of them that will say, I don't know what else to do. You know, their kids are going through a lot of different things. So how, how do we get to the root cause of some of this, and, and get that support system in place? Just another, here's a headline that, that appeared in, after the year everything closed. We lost 70 students in that process. When, when we closed in March, 70 kids disappeared that we don't know where they went, because they didn't go to another school district and register. We just don't know what happened to them. They're not living in our community anymore. They, they moved. 14 of those were seniors that we lost on our graduation count. So of course, that's going to affect that. But more importantly, where are they? Are they okay? Did they go somewhere else and finish? We just don't know, because we, we lost, we lost that contact with them. So a lot of things happened when the governor shut, shut things down on us at that point. So...
So another thing we're going to talk about, social-emotional learning. And that's pretty much developing those lifelong learning skills. A lot of times, you'll hear, social-emotional learning being SEL. But if you want to have higher achievement for, for all students, we know academics is a key part, in making sure that we are following our, our academic content standards. But really, to balance that out, you also have to make sure that the conditions and motivations are correct for students as well. So it's, it's a balancing act, between making sure that socially and emotionally, we're ready to go, and also that we're having high-quality instruction, to have to play, and play nice, is like I, I would like to say, for that to happen. So we're looking at social-emotional learning for the school district. We're going to amp this up a little bit this year, and in the coming years. This year, we're working with the Montgomery County SEL department, and we're going to, and the district developed an, a cohort. And that's going to be a group of, of people from each building, that we're going to meet half-day sessions once a month. And during those half-day sessions, we're going to be talking about how we can integrate SEL best practices within our buildings, how we, how can we continue to build those connections between our staff, our students, and our families, and then continue working on creating those positive relationships and learning environments. Like what Dwayne said earlier, I, we, even with curriculum and getting emails, social-emotional learning, I get about 60 or 70 emails a day on that. We can buy any program and just throw it out there, but we really, really want to make sure that we're doing what's going to be best for our teachers and for our students. We're also going to be looking at, working with Panorama Education, which is a warehouse, kind of, and it can allow us to create surveys, where we can send those out to students, that really, we can then hear our student voices, and what they need, which is a big part, because we think we know what our students need. It's our perception. But really, to hear from them is what we're looking at getting. Both of these projects are actually grant-funded. So the SEL cohort's going to be funded through the Montgomery County Adamus Board. And we are fortunate enough to also get a disaster relief grant, and that's going to be our funding for the Panorama Education for this coming year. Excited also, in that Nolan Campbell, who's now our student rep, this is something that he's really interested in. So we're going to invite Nolan, keep him abreast of everything that's going on while we're, while we're doing this. Another piece for social-emotional learning that we're going to be looking at, is beefing up our mental health services. So we already, right now, have a working partnership with Samaritan Behavior Health. Currently, in the district, we have three mental health therapists who work with students who receive Medicaid. And this year, we are going to add three more mental health therapists. So we'll have a grand total of six. The three new mental health therapists that we're, positions that we're looking for, they are able to see all students. So they would have the ability to still see Medicaid students, but also those students who are underinsured, and then those students that are insured. So our main goal for this whole piece is to make sure that we're expanding our services for all students. And then really, to look at, looking at our prevention services, seeing what kids really need, and trying to offer help to them before things get out of hand. Things that will be a little bit different this year, is that we will be, be able to provide health screenings to all students, just to look for warning signs, especially those warning signs in the areas of depression and anxiety. And again, this is, parents can opt out if they choose to have these screenings done. If a parent opts out of a screening process at the beginning of the year, but things start to escalate with a child, and they want some help, they can receive that help, you know, if they reach out for school mental health. And again, this is all funded through our Student Wellness Success Funds. So any questions on that?
So the, the new three health therapists can work with any student in the school, no matter what.
Correct.
Their parents might be wealthy, whatever, the whole gamut.
The big, the hardest thing for us, when we have three people that can see Medicaid only, is the struggle with underinsured. Their insurance is not out of pockets, way too much. And they're just struggling with that. They now have this opportunity, and it's all school-based mental health. And again, we're going to build this, we're going to build this plane and fly it at the same time. So we're going to, we're going to learn, you know, some things. We'll make adjustments, you know, where we need to. And we just want to provide what's going to be best for our kids.
So this would happen when you're having a meeting with a parent, and a parent might say, gosh, my kid's struggling, or they've said this, or they're concerned. And we could say, we have this service if you're interested. And then we can make that connection for them, and then they can get that help they need, rather than them trying to go to a private practice, and not have insurance, and not be able to make it. Or what typically happens in our area is, they're all down in Dayton, or Kettering, or someplace like that. They're not local. And for a parent to be able to take off work and do all that, and get the kid there, is really hard for, for a number of families. So when they could do it right here, if they want that piece, we can put it in place for them.
And this is getting paid for at Success and Wellness Funds, although we won't be giving them anymore after this year, because it's coming in the formula. So they took money from one place, put it in another. That's not surprising. But we have enough money that we have saved over the years that we got it, that we'll be able to support this program at least six, seven, eight years into the future, with what we have saved already for that. So what we didn't want to do is try to put something in place that we weren't going to be able to sustain. So we should be able to maintain this.
Screens will take a long time to take, if they have a place in the buildings, these buildings?
So K through 6, I believe, parents will be able to receive a questionnaire that they can fill out at home. And then those can be sent back into the buildings, or dropped off at the buildings. For grades 7 through 12, that opportunity will happen during advisory times, or during intervention block times that are planned throughout the day. Those behavior specialists will be able to walk them through on what students need to answer. And those will probably be done on Chromebooks.
And again, parents can opt out if they don't want to do that.
Yeah, parents can opt out.
And they can opt back in if they want to.
Yep.
It's a support service for, for them and their families as they need it.
Amy, you're next.
I'm good. Hi, my name's Amy Todd. I'm the Director of Special Education for Pickwa City Schools. And I have the distinct pleasure of talking to you about kind of our inspiration, and how we braid all of these initiatives that we talked about here together. So you all know how, sometimes you'll read something, or you'll watch something, you see something, and it just speaks to you, and it inspires you to, to change something in your life, or just to do something. Well, this phenomenon was happening all last year, and that was, as we would go into trainings, whether it was a webinar, or a reading, being part of a book study, or just our general conversations here in Cabinet, about what we need to do, and the work we need to do in Pickwa, this messaging kept happening over and over again. And it led us to a couple of quotes that have inspired us. So the one you see here on the left is one that actually came in a random email to Dwayne, and even, can't even really find the source, or we would have, we would have put that up there. But it really spoke about our work here, and the work that we were planning to do. We shared this quote with all of the principals, so our administrative team, and we broke down this quote to say, what, what words out of here really speak to you? Some of the things that they pulled out were that idea of having norms, right? This common language of instructional practices, sturdy processes for monitoring what we're doing instructionally. Another one was that coherence around instructional practice. So we talked in curriculum about the fidelity of using the materials we have. So all of these pieces showed up in this quote. As I'm going through a, a book study with our state support team, this phrase, collective efficacy, kept coming. Now, it's not an easy catchphrase to say. We've been practicing with people to say it over and over, because you stumble over that. But what we're asking everybody to do is start to own that, as that's, that's our thing at Pickwa, for this year, for years to come. And that's collective efficacy. As it turns out, we started to study that a little bit, talked about it based on another book study, and along came this book. Just popped up, and it's like, are you kidding me? This is exactly where we're trying to go. Dwayne says to me, Amy, have you seen this? I said, Dwayne, I already ordered it. I started reading it. I am so moved by this. I love that phrase, you can see it underlined there, where it says, spark an urgency within teams to engage. So the, all of the work that we've just talked about tonight, that's our goal, is to spark this urgency, for all of us to be moving towards meeting those goals. If you look like that. This is how they define, or at least in that last book, this is how they define collective efficacy. And what we love about this is, that staff's shared belief, it says. And so ideally, there, you notice, that's plural, staffs, everybody in this district. And staff doesn't just mean teachers. And it doesn't mean that our principals believe we can get this done. It means everybody. And it doesn't mean just Dwayne leading this district. It means everybody. And that we all share the same belief, that if we are all doing everything we can possibly do, we will positively influence students. And we've talked to you about some of the disengagement that happened because of COVID. Some of our students, maybe they weren't disadvantaged before, but COVID has left them. but COVID has left them in that state too. And this says that that won't matter. We will overcome that for all of our kids as long as we all believe we can do that, and we can do it for every kid here in Pico. Kind of takes the wind out of your sails, right? When there's a pause on that. So one of the other things that we know is we have to have a structure for how that work happens. That structure, these are all fancy words, that DLT, BLT, TBT. But what that really means is that we need a team, a full team of representation across the district to have a voice in everything that we're doing, to really design the goals, set the goals. We have, every building has a pulled-together folks that represent their building, and they come together for a district leadership team, and we're going to have regular meetings with those folks. And so we look at things from that elevation of Pico. What does it look like all the way across from K-12 and all of our students? When we get to that building level, they're focused on their grade level of kiddos that are there. And when we get to the teacher-based team level, they're really focused on the, those little faces they have, or the big faces they have right there in front of them. But we need to have communication. You can see in those arrows, that communication goes back and forth. So the teachers are going to be sharing information with their building-level teams. Those building-level teams will bring that to the district-level team where we can look at data all the way across the board. And we can say, what are some things we need to change or do? Some of the programs that we've mentioned, how do we tweak those? How do we adjust those so that we're getting the impact that we know collectively we can? And so when all this inspiration hit, it was track season. And so this idea of we are running a race here, we are always racing towards the end of that next school year. But we also all know that we're all, we're all running in the same race, even if our buildings do it differently, if the high school is different from Spring Creek Primary. The finish line is still our students achieve. Bottom line, our students achieve. So when we're writing goals, even though a goal for Pico Center Intermediate School may not be the exact same goal for Pico Junior High, it's okay. They're still, they're still running in these lanes, and they're still going to hit the same finish line, which is student achievement. So we put together a graphic, we did a little talk about, I love analogies. So we did a little talk about when there are hurdles and when, you know, if you've ever run. I'm not a track star, but my daughter runs track, so I've learned a little bit about that. We've, we talked about how when you're a sprinter and you have the blocks and how that, that pushes you, right? So you've got a good base to push off of, and that we need that in our buildings too. And so we just kind of took this and ran with it. I had to. But as you can see, then each building is going to set its own goals. But it's also then tracking, we're marking, we're checking the pace. So we have metrics to measure to say, are we on track to finish this race? We have partnerships. So each of our board members is going to be in a partnership on this DLT with one of our buildings. So you're, get your running shoes on, you're really going to be running with us. And so again, our goal is at the end that we have, you say, adult implementations. What are all of our adults going to do? Part of that is that instructional support that they're going to have. But what are all of our adults going to do that are going to automatically give us some really good gains for our student outcomes? So I hope you're inspired. End of the game, collective efficacy. Thanks.
Thank you. So we, we sat and admired the problem for a while and decided we really just needed to jump in there and get some things done. And this is where we've, we've got our work put into place. So do you have any questions up to this point of where, where we are, what we're doing?
Is gifted going to be pretty much the same?
I need that up there still. Gifted will play a part with coaching and everything else. There are some slides I'm going to need later. Leave it right there. Yep. Yeah. Yep. Every, every student at every level is going to be impacted by the work. Good question. Thoughts, questions at all? I did send you a copy of that. You can reflect on it. By all means, we went fast, and there was a lot of information that we knew that. But if we spent three minutes per slide, we would have been here an hour and a half just on that. So we tried to like two minutes or less, and you guys did fantastic. Thank you for that. But, but ask, ask us anytime, call, email, whatever we can do. We'll continue to go over this as we get into the DLT work that is coming up too. Okay?
All right. Now, headed towards your agenda or?
Nope, we're still here.
Oh, okay.
I'm still on my agenda. Next is COVID protocols. So the next slide, please. As you know, it, it feels like things are just kind of disarray and a mess. Last year, there were, there was, there was the governor's orders, there were the Ohio health orders, there were the CDC orders, there were more orders than you can imagine in place. We had to sort all of that out, we had to put all that into place, and we were, we were stuck in many situations. And again, you can see some of the outcomes that I think everybody was frustrated with. This year, all that has been removed, and you see the news talking quite a bit about what schools should do and not do, and you can see the effect of it every morning, every evening when you turn, turn the news on. I, I think, you know, I've tried to be very intentional with how we communicate. I try to do it one time because you get that one good time to do that. And if you keep changing your plan over and over and over, it's confusing for people. So I've tried to really just get, get it out one time. We've had our information, I think we released it in June. It's on our website with everything else that we have, and I've tried to really stick to that. We won't make changes until we get data. You know, a perfect example of that was last year around the holidays. You saw a lot in the news where school districts were considering extending holiday breaks because they were afraid people were going to go meet with their families and numbers were going to surge and so on. And many districts throughout the state and even nation did that. We said, no. My analogy was if a snowstorm's coming next Friday, I don't close school now. I wait and see what the, what the outcome is before we make those decisions. So we'll do the same thing here. We're not going to jump to conclusions and make changes without really having some good data in front of us and lots of discussions. And of course, we'll include you guys in all that information. But right now, this is what the CDC highly recommends. They recommend face masks, they recommend social distancing, frequent hand washing. I've simplified all of their symptoms, we all know them by now, and just said, if you have contagious symptoms, stay home. That hasn't changed for us ever. Anytime a person's had a fever, or they've had, you know, vomiting or diarrhea, forever and a day, we've said, stay home, that, that's contagious. We don't want that in the building, whether it's flu or whatever it is. So those things haven't changed. It's recommendations. Some people are, you know, excited about them, some people aren't. It's, it's, that's where they are. So we'll post those as, as we've been asked, and we'll get those out there. The CDC does have a mandate for masks on a bus. It doesn't make sense to me, I'll put that right out there. It doesn't make sense to a lot of people that you're going to get on a bus and wear a mask and then get off, and you don't have to wear a mask. Why, why are we putting it in place? It's, it's really to protect the district. At this point, when it was first introduced, we were at a conference. The lawyer at that point said, since it's a mandate, they said that the CDC can put the mandate out there. You, you should follow it because if you don't, you're putting your district at risk. So what does that mean? It, it means if a kid were to contract COVID and we didn't follow this and we were blatant about it, they could say, I think I got it on the bus. If they put us in a lawsuit and we said, prove it, they're going to say, well, you, you have to prove that you did your due diligence to make sure you protected every kid first. And if I say, we didn't pay attention to the rule, we lost all immunity at that point. And we've opened ourselves up to multiple lawsuits, not only now, but in the future for anybody that would have gotten COVID and would have had any kind of complications, especially if they were long-term. So my recommendation is we're going to follow this because I can't put the taxpayers in that situation. I, I don't want frivolous lawsuits to come forward. You know, they come forward to us sometimes. We are under the notion that we're going to fight that every time. We're not a cash cow. We don't just give money out because we, we do make sure we implement what we have to. And we, we feel confident going into those positions that we've done our due diligence to make sure we've protected kids and done what was required of us. So that's that. Questions I get on that are, are there exemptions? Yes, there are exemptions. All they have to do is write that, put that in writing to me. I will print that out, I keep that in a binder, and then we'll communicate that to the appropriate people, like bus drivers and principals and so on, so that they're aware of that. Some people have asked, there isn't a Ohio Revised Code that says public transportation does not include public school buses. And whereas that's true, that's a state mandate, or, or law, whereas the CDC is a federal which overrules it. So in talking with our lawyer and really making sure I understand that, that's, that's what he has indicated. A federal will go over that, and it specifically in the mandate says that it, it does include school buses. So that's why that happened. One question is, why are we doing it when other school districts aren't? I can't respond to why other school districts aren't doing it, but I did explain, I think, why. I think it's important for us to follow the mandate because, again, I just don't want to put our taxpayers in that position. And those are the main questions that I get on that piece right there. So any questions for me on those two pieces yet?
So if someone has an exemption, they would submit that to you?
Yep.
And it's a child-by-child basis?
Correct. The family should say, we would, we're seeking the exemption based on the following things that meets their specific needs. So it can be a religious exemption, it can be some kind of a medical exemption. There's a list. If you go on the CDC website, you can see all the reasons that are, that are on there.
Okay.
Then that releases us from the [inaudible].
Correct. It's important for me to keep that so that I can say, again, we've done our due diligence. If a kid just walked on the bus and said, I'm exempt from a mask, and I didn't do anything about that, and something happened, again, somebody could say, did you verify that the kid's not wearing a mask had the exemption? So we just want to make sure we've got that in place. A bus driver, by the way, could say, I'm filing an exemption. So, you know, the public could see a bus driver driving down the road with a bus with an exemption. It's going to be confusing for people to sort out. It's, it's as frustrating for us as it is for parents, as it will be for kids.
How many schools in Ohio do you think are not doing, not following the mandate?
I, I couldn't even guess. I can tell you, I've, again, I've spoken to two lawyers, all of our associations, Ohio School Boards Association, the Superintendent, so every one of them says, you better do your due diligence. You lose your immunity when you don't do that. So I, I'm not criticizing another district. I don't know what, what their reasons are. I just, again, would never put our taxpayers in that position. If we do our due diligence and we, we track what we've done, you know, I'll tell you too, we talked to our insurance company when we said, if, if a lawsuit came to us, how does that work? And they said the same thing to us. If you've done your due diligence, you're covered. If you don't, we're not going to cover you on that. So, so now we're again getting into tax dollars and general funds and all that, and who knows to what extent. There's no lawsuits that have happened, to my knowledge, right now. Not to be critical of a lawyer, but you know, somebody's out there going, I'm waiting for the moment. So I don't want to be that, that district. You know, they always reference law cases where it's such-and-such school district versus so-and-so. That, that's not what I want our, our legacy to be, so. Other questions on that? Okay, next slide. So what are we doing and what are we not doing? I'll go to the not doing because I get these questions sometimes. We're not testing students in school. We won't do that. We don't have those tests. We're not putting things up kids' noses. We're not doing that. That's up to a parent to do. I firmly believe that's always going to be up to a parent, so we're not, we're not doing that. We're not vaccinating students in school. I've not done clinics in our schools. I still believe personally that that's a parent decision. So we're, we're not doing those things. And sometimes a parent will call and say, I just want to make sure you're not going to do that to my kid when they come. And they, they've got that concern. So I want to be clear that we are not doing those things in our schools. What, what are we doing? We're going to still ask people to just really monitor their health at home. Again, that's something that we've done forever. I mean, we're highlighting that more, I think, because COVID's around and the symptoms are there. But we've always asked parents to do that. We're going to continue to wash our hands and sanitize, that, that's a good practice. We're not going to share computers. We didn't do that last year, and I think that that helps. It certainly helped. You know, there's all kinds of information about flu, but we didn't even have flu last year. And the two years prior to COVID, there was a couple of times when we almost met our threshold to close the schools to get through a flu era because our safety plan requires us to do that. If you reach a certain threshold of absences, you're supposed to close your school and work with the health department. So we, we got close to that prior to COVID, but we didn't have to even consider that last year because of what we put in place. Same thing with sharing basic supplies. We'll just ask kids to maybe, you know, wash their hands, sanitize them. We don't have a lot of that going on, but that's just a good practice for us to have. We'll do water bottles throughout the day for students, so we're not using the drinking fountain. And that's mostly because the younger kids don't always remember to keep their mouth off, of, of the piece. So that's more of just a safety guard for them than anything else.
But students who can bring a water bottle?
Absolutely.
And can refill at the station.
Absolutely. And many kids will just bring one of these. They'll, they'll start with water, and they'll just fill that throughout the day, and that's no problem at all. Yeah. We'll, we'll have the drinking fountain itself shut off, but we have water bottle, water bottle filler stations throughout the, the buildings that we'll, we'll keep open. Of course, we'll talk about proper sneeze and cough etiquette. We've always done that. There may be some office areas that still use the cough and sneeze shields. I think most of them have actually taken them down, but there might be a couple of those in place. And we're going to do our best to stay three feet distance. We, we can't do that in every condition. It's just not going to happen, but we'll, we'll do our best, and we'll, we'll hope for the best out of that. I'll go back and say, we were very fortunate, we stayed open every day last year. Not every district can say that. I, I hands-down give our staff the biggest kudos ever. I mean, they covered classes, our bus drivers did the same thing. We, we had days where we really cut it close, and people just jumped in and did what they, they could do. We have to stay open. You saw the effect of closing. We have to. We have to do everything we can to do that to keep kids in place. So you can see some schools have opened, some things are happening. We're again going to look at our numbers. We did, we did really well in many cases last year. There, you know, there were times when our neighboring school districts were closing or things were happening, and we didn't have that same effect. So we're going to continue to just do our best and, and really kind of fight through that. We just, I think, two hours before the board meeting, got another new update on quarantining. Tony, you want to talk a little bit about what that looks like in terms of those, those guidances and recommendations? And they, they are changing. We probably, gosh, we've probably had three changes, I think, since they came through, so.
Yeah, I think the most recent one added language that included, if you have a negative, this is for close contacts in quarantining. If you have a negative PCR or antigen test, that's approved. So not one you can take at home in secret, but you would have to have it approved test. You could return to school with a mask without having to follow the initial quarantine guidelines, which are 14 days from a close contact. This is all recommended for 10, and you can have a test after, on or after day five. If it's negative, you can return after day seven. So the new, the newest language was that with that negative test, you could return. And then there was additional language in there for athletics that added the language of a negative test result to be able to return. And then, but they accept a positive at-home test. So I mean, it's just, there's some conflicting things. We just got it, I mean, literally a couple of hours ago. The nice part was it appears that that negative test piece, in order to help kids get back from a close-contact quarantine type of situation, should speed that process up if parents are, or will get that test done, see that negative result, get them back in. So I'm hopeful for that one.
I've often said it has to make sense for people to comply, and, and, you know, I'm not suggesting good, bad, or ugly, but you know, a frustration is, it's heavy in the news about what schools have to do. But if you think about it, students will walk out, take masks off if they're mandated, and go to concerts and football games and the fair and all these other places that are still on the news that they're not talking about. They're going to be around each other. Again, that doesn't make sense. You know, we're going to quarantine kids and ask them to leave school because that's, that's the mandate. Not a criticism, I don't think kids are going to stay home, so they're still going to be in the community. So is it, is it going to have the impact that they're saying? And I'm not saying go back to what we were before, but last year, it was consistent. Everything was in place, everything was shut down, masks were supposed to be everywhere. You, you at least had this sense of, okay, you understand what, what's happening. And, and the frustration, I think, now is things just are back to where they're not making sense. And you've got politicians saying, man, you better get masks on. Yet they're going, I'm not going to mandate it. Some of them are saying, we're going to mandate that it doesn't happen. And, and you know, the governor one minute is saying, there's just not a political appetite for it now, then the next minute, well, gee, we really have to have it. And it's just all over the map. So it's just hard for people to wrap their brains around. A, as we've said, there are so many different changes that keep coming and every time you get something set and you want to communicate that out so people understand that, it changes again. And I still go back to being very intentional on that. Once you communicate it, people kind of wrap their thoughts around it and then it changes again, you got to redevelop that and it just keeps going. So it's hard, I think, for people to get a grasp of what's happening and how to, how to deal with it. So thoughts or questions on any of that?
So that tracking is just going to have to continue?
Yeah, we have to track and we have to submit. Um, there's a third party, um, with the county that we send that data to the county and they submit that. So we already are prepared to track as best we can without specific, um, direct guidance, I guess is what I'll say. It's going to be a challenge.
My concern with that is we'll convey what we understand to the parent because we have to call, then the third party calls the parent. I'm, I'm hoping the parent doesn't get the runaround or get two different messages because we won't get feedback from that. They don't call us and say, here's the conversation that I had with the parent. We will never know what that was. So I'm just really hoping that parents don't get a, a, a mixed message in, in everybody's ability to try to communicate what, what's supposed to happen.
So among all these things, start the school year, we have masks on bus and then just recommend it for the school day?
Correct.
You don't have to.
I've had, um, one parent contact just saying, I just want to make sure that you're taking things serious. They, they said, everything went really well last year, we really liked what happened. Um, they work in the medical profession and they just wanted to make sure, and of course we assured them, we are still doing some good measures. I've probably had maybe eight, I'm just guessing, parents call and say, I really don't have a mask. So that's, that's the kind of communication that I've, that I've received in terms of, of that, that part. Any other thoughts or questions on that? Okay. We'll certainly keep you updated, we'll, you know, we want to stay open, we really do. What we did worked last year and things, things were good. And again, I can't give enough credit to staff and students and, and you know, I think parents did a great job. It, it, there was, there was good coordination, I think, last year. And, and we'll do the best we can with, with what we've got, so. Anything else there? Okay. The last thing I have is just again, Nolan's here and, and we really didn't give him a chance to, to talk last time. He may not, I'm putting you on the spot. Um, we don't, we don't have a spot on the agenda for him. And again, we've got the student rep here and he hasn't had a chance to work with students because school's not in session. But Nolan, I, I'd like to during my time just say, do you have anything you want to add or any questions that you might have from a student point of view to the board?
Um, the only thing that I really wanted to add is what you're talking about with the COVID, um, situation, everything. Back home in Indiana, I'm seeing a lot of schools that open and they've already gone virtual for two weeks because of the cases rising and everything. From what I'm hearing, they aren't doing anything. And so I think it is kind of important to keep going with what we've been doing in the past to try to limit and make sure we aren't online because I don't think anybody wants that at all.
Thanks.
That's it? Okay. Well, next will be the superintendent's agenda, so what I want to do like we did before is get a motion for, um, numbers one through seven so that we can vote. And then we can open everything up to topics for discussion. So may I have a motion to, uh, through the superintendent's agenda? Points one through seven.
Still moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
You should vote afterwards, after you've had the discussion.
Either way.
That vote should...
Sure. I'll, I'll read these off here and review any notes and answer any questions that you might have. So recommend board approval of the attached list of donations and grants to the Pickwa City School District. We had the Music Warehouse that donated to the Brandon Copeland Scholarship Fund. Kona Ice, um, comes and does some programming for us, so they donated, um, the Pickwa Indian Athletic Boosters donated to the wrestling program. And, um, we also had some, some money donated to the show choir fees. And finally, the Pickwa Education Foundation donated to Spring Creek, um, for a program that they're putting into place out there. Recommend board approval of the established bus routes. Um, those again were added at the last minute there for us because they were the most current for the school year. Recommend board approval of the enrollment of, Noel, the, I can never say his last name. The Vassarin of Mongolia, um, for the Pickwa High School 2021 school year, um, as a foreign exchange student from ASSE International Student Exchange Program. He'll come to a board meeting at some point and introduce himself so you can enter, yeah, meet him, as well as we do have some other exchange students in the district. Recommend board approval of the attached list of overnight field trip for the Pickwa High School Girls Soccer Team to Camp Chenawith in Greenville, Ohio. Um, that starts actually tonight on the 27th, I've communicated that to you. Board policy allows me to, to approve those if we can't get to a board meeting in time. Um, but we always do a formal, um, approval on that. And you can see that in there. And recommend board approval of the attached textbooks for disposal, uh, removal of the inventory of Pickwa City Schools. There are outdated books that haven't been used for a while. And recommend board approval of the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal of the inventory of Pickwa City School District. Um, it's a pretty lengthy list. The, the two, two things, well, three things, we always again, take everything we can from it. But when, when we closed that March of 20, we actually had a skid of computers packed and ready, we were going to sell them and get some money to, to apply toward new technology. And we heard hints that there might be a closure and we, we stopped that process. And if we had not done that, we would have already given all those computers away that somebody else would have eagerly grabbed up. So we were able to get computers in kids' hands, so that worked out really well. But the third factor is our technology has to meet certain requirements for state testing and it only goes so long, so many updates can happen before they become outdated. So we've used these pieces of technology to our fullest extent, I guess is what I'm saying before we, um, got rid of those. So, um, I'll answer any questions that anybody has before you take a vote.
Any questions, comments?
No.
All in favor of approving the superintendent's agenda items one through seven? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Measure passes. Okay, Mr. Lyons, personnel vote.
Thank you very much.
Or agenda, sorry.
Personnel agenda first. Um, I won't spend a lot of time because you did get to meet a lot of our new people today and we're very excited about that. And you'll continue to meet more of those, uh, throughout the year and hopefully as you get in the buildings, get a chance to see them in action. I do want to mention that you also see those transfers for the coaching positions, things like that are also on here, also are, are FMLAs that are coming up as well. I wanted to highlight Cindy Song because she retired as a bus driver, long-term person, and, uh, she had a retirement celebration, she's on here for approval of her retirement resignation as well, so.
Over 26 years of driving a bus for us.
Thank you to her for her service and, uh, she did promise me at the retirement celebration that she would come back to Sutton. I'm going to hold her to that, so we may need her at some point, so.
She was a great driver.
If there are questions on the personnel agenda, if there are, I'll take those now. Thank you.
Okay. Motion for the personnel agenda vote?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Um, no old business, no new business. And we do have hearing of the public non-agenda items. You're okay?
Got enough.
Okay. All right.